Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go with the meeting here. We call this special meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. The council, you have a popular proposed agenda with a few little minor changes on here. We're gonna have a consent item.
The toughest one.
That's the one you have on the resolution. Authorizing the city manager to execute the installment purchase agreement.
Just a quick comment on that. When we put together the installment purchase agreement, which we do every year for our equipment, we failed to include any of the IT equipment. So this is actually a second installment purchase and it simply covers the normal IT replacement. I want to clarify, none of this has anything to do with the much larger IT project. This is the traditional end of life material that we do every year.
And we're also gonna add, I'm assuming that number two is gonna move, number three, two is gonna move to three and we're gonna replace that slot with a conversation on the Jo Ed Golden Leaf grant.
And three will follow. Physically, your 23 budget discussion will follow that.
Okay, so with that said, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Little changes. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so now I would entertain a motion to go into closed session, discuss matters dealing with personnel.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor of signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Members of the council, thank you very much for this workshop again on the budget. I'd like to start off though before the budget to bring you up to date on a follow-up discussion that Anthony presented to you last week relative to a funding package for the Commerce Road work. So at this time, please.
Thank you, Dr. Woodruff. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Oh, you have a minute? Thirty-six seconds.
We'll have a minute, thirty-six seconds. Let's see if we can get, uh, take two. All right, there we go. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here again tonight. As Dr. Woodruff said, we did speak last week about the Commerce Road project. That was more of the who, what, when, and why, and tonight we're gonna talk about possibly how we might be able to fund. So this finance, this financing plan has been put together over the past week with support from Wally as well as Gail to come up with some creative ways to put money together for potentially funding the project. If you recall, last time we were together, I showed you a slide like this. What this does is basically breaks down the components of the overall project and to the functional pieces that would be eligible for various revenue sources. So for instance, Powellville, that would be mainly roadwork, water and sewer, pretty self-explanatory, and same thing with stormwater. So these are the numbers that we would have to get to in order to total the 1.34 million in order to be able to move forward with the project as designed. But as you recall, we presented three different options to you, and we'll talk a little bit more about that here in just a few minutes. So looking at the Powellville revenue sources, so one thing that we looked at were a number of street rehabilitation projects that were complete where there were residual funds available, but the project had yet to be closed out. So you can see going back to 2017, excuse me, fiscal '17, with GF 1701, Carolina Forest has been complete, has been for some time now, but there's still some money available. So the intent here is with that project as well as two others, we would take the funding balance that's available, transfer that into the Commerce Road project if you so choose. Last time, we also talked about sources of revenue from the pedestrian projects. You can see there's one from 2019, and there's one from '21 and '22. Again, if we were to take that money and put it on Commerce Road, that wouldn't prevent us from doing a good amount of sidewalk and pedestrian safety work. The key project that we're focusing on there were some infill sidewalks on Gum Branch Road. DOT has committed to pay for that for us with some safety money because of the crash issue that's involved. But then we also, as I mentioned last time, we have about $850,000 allocated in the FTA Cares Grant to do sidewalk infill, ADA upgrades, as well as pedestrian crossing improvements. So right there, we're still looking at at least a million dollars worth of pedestrian investments over the next few years with those two funding sources. So all those together would get us to the $489,000 that I showed you just a few minutes Moving on to water and sewer, so while I mentioned to you during the last session that we do have an existing CIP project where funds are allocated, this was money that was set aside to help pay for utility relocations associated with the project. At $371,000, that's not gonna cover the total amount if we wanted to go forward with the full scope of the project that DOT has put together, and then fund balance would be used to handle the rest of that $550,000 obligation.
And you're talking about word sewer fund balance, not general fund balance?
That's correct. Yes, sir, this is all water and sewer. And please stop me if you have any questions. So that takes us to stormwater, and I'm certainly not an expert on this project, and Wally is here if you have any questions, but we have executed on the Center Street area stormwater project, but there are issues, from my understanding, with right-of-way and easements that will prevent us from doing the entire project. So that leaves a residual balance in the, in that project of $156,000 and change. If we were to liquidate that and to put it towards Center Street, then fund balance from the stormwater fund would be $143,000. Of course, that gets us to the $300,000. So I promised Dr. Washington that I only had a few slides, and this is the last one. This is the summary of how all that comes together to fund the 1.34 that would be needed if we choose to execute the agreement with DOT and the design as is. And as I mentioned before, we do have three options available to us. We can move forward with the design, that would require a plan like this to go into place, or something similar. We can go back to the drawing board with DOT and try to reduce the cost, but again, we're not gonna reduce the cost substantially. We really just end up being able to trim around the edges of that 1.34 million dollars. And then the last option is of course, the do-nothing option. We could basically back out of the project and allow DOT to move forward a whole piece of it. Of course, the challenge there is, you saw what the condition of the roadway is, and we would have a brand-new commercial reflector street connecting to really what amounts to be a residential street.
We would still have some reutility relocated.
It appears that we would have around $200,000 worth of utility relocation costs even if we went with the no, with the, with option three, basically declining the improvements to existing Commerce Road.
What kind of chicken around the edges are we talking about?
I don't remember exactly what it was, but...
We talked about sidewalks on one side instead of both sides, minimal reduction.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sorry, I'll move closer to the mic. We talked about a couple of options, you know, we could install sidewalks on one side instead of both sides. That helps with some stormwater also, but again, you're not on 1.3 million dollars, you may be talking less than $100,000. So I mean, really, we would be sacrificing some of our standards that we require in other places in order to trim around the edges. So we just didn't feel like that was a, if that's an option, we just didn't feel like it was a great option.
Do all these cost very strong relationships to the, to the actual stormwater? For example, you got the, a budget laid out for $300,000 of stormwater work.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So that's based on the line items pulled out of the DOT estimates specifically related to stormwater improvement. Same thing with water and sewer, and then Powellville is basically the delta.
So it's what's eligible for Powellville.
Pardon?
The Powellville is actually what would be eligible under the Powellville law.
Okay.
So keep Gail and I out of jail.
The other thing you may recall is we talked about the DOT offering us to pay them back over a three-year period. Gail reminded us all that we cannot sign a contract for work without having the money actually in the buying plan. So we would prefer this approach rather than the approach of paying it back over a three-year period. This meets all of our regulations. And Gail frowned because it, I mean, make sure, this, this approach, paying it upfront, would meet all of our regulations, is that correct?
Hmm.
And for the record, she's not a yes.
And this won't take away any of the road projects that are in the works or future? I mean, this won't affect those, take money away from those?
No, sir, not the, not the roads that we already have planned. And while we have residual funds in projects, the reason that typically happens is we try not to close projects prematurely because we have, the city requires an 18-month warranty period whereby the contractor is responsible for defective work, but in some cases, like street paving, in 18 months, something may happen, but it may not necessarily be the contractor's fault, or it may be something that we have to bring somebody in to prove whose fault it is. So we try not to release funds prematurely from a project. And as we talk about the project, we actually have one, the FY19 streets, we actually have an issue that we're trying to resolve right now. But that project, while it was, while it was funded in FY19, it wasn't actually constructed until '20 or later through '20 to into '21, and we have a failure that we're trying to deal with, which is a long-bring briar in the Brimmar area. So we do have things happen periodically.
But wouldn't we go ahead and bank the money and still pay it back over a three-year period and pay it with dollars that are worth less in the future?
Ms. May, do you have a comment on that?
We can make the three payments, we just have to identify the funding source before we can sign the contract, that we know where it's coming from.
I like, yeah, I like the idea of banking the money and then paying it back over three years, using their money instead of...
Well, they're not charging us any interest either.
There's no downside to making it over three years, it's all upside.
So feedback, oh, I'm sorry. So feedback from DOT, if we choose to move forward, this project would be left for construction in June, which means that construction would probably happen sometime around, it would begin around July or August. So this is not something that we're going to agree to and then wait two years to start.
We'll see some action soon.
We'll see action very soon.
Let's do it.
We can have it get it all covered without having to come out of pocket.
The other thing that we would mention, because I'm sure some people are saying, well, spending money, what about paving? Well, the good news is today, we opened the bids for the paving. You recall that about a month ago, we opened bids, we had to reject them all. Today, the bids were reopened, we had two bidders, and the current, at the current time, the staff is analyzing both of the bids to make sure they're responsible bids, and we hope to have that on your agenda for award one week from tomorrow night, the 18th. You want to elaborate on that?
No, but I can, what I can say is, the cost went up in the last month, month and a half. It's actually closer to two months from the receipt of the last bid, but it went up. So it'll be back before you for consideration.
I think we have enough feeling with this one for, for cost escalation.
It's what they gave us. It's got a 15% contingency in it, so...
The answer then is no.
I'm afraid of...
But DOT does tend to get a little bit better asphalt prices than we do, but does they have more than we do, so I don't know.
Feel comfortable moving forward with this approach?
I like his idea. Yes, do it in three years.
One other thing that I have to mention to you, and Ryan asked that I do this, at some point, we will have to readdress three properties that are along Existing Country Club Drive. They will become Commerce Road addresses, so that, I believe that has to come before council, doesn't it?
No.
No?
You just may hear about it.
If you hear about it, then we're gonna make contact with them and make sure they understand what's going on.
I think it was three.
Two to three.
Yeah, I, yup.
That's gonna happen when they're not talking to us.
Sure.
That's right. But this is the realignment of Country Club.
Readdressing is not popular, especially if it's a residence.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good work, Wally.
Mayor and Council, we've, we've talked about the Jacksonville business park before, and I just want to give you a little bit of update first, you know, that's what you saw last time about what the park entails, and there's the, the physical area of the park. And of course, when we talked about it last time, we talked about the concept of Jo Ed and the city, you know, private-public partnership with also a private contractor, and none of that's changed right now. The main thing we were trying to accomplish is basically change the business park from a low-density stormwater permit to a high-density and build the actual stormwater pond. One of the things that Jo Ed has told me is down at Camp Davis, where they've been selling lots like crazy, the reason the lots are so valuable is because businesses are looking to not have to deal with the stormwater problem. And so what we'll end up with is we'll end up with ponds that can handle the flow of the stormwater for what gets built there, and that's very attractive to the businesses that are trying to get a new location. But mainly, we're gonna talk just tonight about the move forward on the stormwater permit and the actual construction there. Here are the estimates associated with, they came from Tidewater Associates, the cost that for doing what we want to create the central stormwater ponds, change the permit, and actually make a connection to that road that exists between the old River of Life Church and the housing on Gum Branch Road. Here's where we are today. Jo Ed has applied for a grant for the southeast region, and they'll get that 262 without a question. They'll have an opportunity to go back, if not all, the members of the southeast region use their funding to possibly get more out of that. They also applied for a $1 million grant from Golden Leaf Foundation, and last week, we met on-site with a representative from the Golden Leaf Foundation, and one thing we learned at the time that Jo Ed submitted for the grant, they thought that only a nonprofit could get the funding, get the grant award. What we found out is the city could get it, and that's the reason we're having this discussion today, is because if Jo Ed gets the grant, then what happens is we're gonna want to do the construction with our contractor and our contract. You know, and so what would happen is we'd basically award the contract, we'd end up paying invoices, we would then submit those to Jo Ed, Jo Ed would then have to go to Golden Leaf to get reimbursement and that. The city's gonna do most of the work anyhow, managing, you know, the construction and that, and to get a third party, another party in there just makes the process a little more challenging. Plus, Jo Ed, you know, they don't have staffing to do this anyhow, so the, the last point here, and we got your permission to submit for the one grant from the Industrial Development Fund, and the reason that we go into them is because there's certain construction activities that are required, mainly like drainage structures, that Golden Leaf won't pay for. So we're using a combination of grants to meet that total cost of the project. But so anyhow, back to the, the main reason for this discussion, we're seeking council's approval to basically inform the Golden Leaf that we would like the grant awarded to the city if it's approved, rather than Jo Ed.
Council, any questions from Mr. Massey? Everybody, you don't need to vote on that, do you?
Yes, as long as there's a consensus in this, is everybody agreeable with this?
Yes.
Please, raise your hand. We have a vote.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
We're getting closer to the date you've all been looking forward to. That's the last meeting on the budget. You've seen this slide before on what you've accomplished. You've been through a long series of meetings, and you've had a lot of very important discussions on some major topics. Tonight is May the 10th. It's hard to believe. What's ahead of you is really the end. The ninth inning of any baseball game is always the most important. When Mr. Bittner was quarterback for the Steelers, he can always tell you the last two minutes is where the game is won or lost. So we're to the point where we're in the last two minutes or so of the budget. Compensation, diversity training, finalize the budget, and then potentially adopt it. You will notice a new date has appeared, May 23rd. Why is that? First of all, since I've been here 12 years, you've never met on a Monday, and John pointed out to me that you want to be fair to every day of the week, so we should have the opportunity to meet on Monday, the 23rd. Now, in seriousness, you have a lot of heavy discussions ahead. Tonight is about educating, it's not about advocating, it's about educating. One of the rules we have in our management team is educate before you advocate. The 18th, you're gonna have some heavy discussions about compensation and about your tax rate, and you may need more time than June the 7th for adoption. Why the 23rd? Well, as you will recall, and I know everyone, you have it marked with a ray on the calendar, 23rd is my last day. So if I'm gonna be part of helping you finalize the budget, we put on there potentially the 23rd. Now hopefully, next week, you can settle everything, but I will tell you, you may not be able to. So that's the reason why the 23rd is on there. John also made me promise that you could work until midnight on the 23rd, and I would still be under obligation to you, so...
Get every penny out. Squeeze it.
We can always stop the clocks like salient asleep.
Tonight, we're going to help you meet your employees. You know, you're gonna see a whole lot of numbers, but at the end of the day, it's the faces behind the numbers. It's the people who actually get everything accomplished. We're gonna show you profiles, wage scales, the impact of inflation, the competition for employees, some employee survey results. Next week, we're gonna get down to really asking you for hard decisions. What about compensation? What about the step plan for JPD? Now, you've already taken an informal vote that voided the fire and emergency services step plan, but as you adopt the budget, I believe it's appropriate for you to take a formal vote. You could take that tonight, we're not asking you to do that though, because tonight it's about educate. We're gonna be talking about race and equity training, agree on any other issues with the budget, and then the worst of all decisions has to come, what's gonna be your tax rate. And then, of course, on the 7th, you would be in a position to adopt. Of course, you could go all the way to the 21st, you could actually go all the way to the 30th, because the law says you have to have it adopted by June 30th. Let's start off by meeting your employees. These are the people who get this city running every day. As you know, we have hundreds of miles, 165 miles of roads around the city. We produce over 5 million gallons of water every day, we need over 6.5 million of wastewater every day, and what you see here are the people who actually get out there and make sure your pipes for collecting the sewer are working. Yes, we actually have people no longer who climb telephone poles. I'm sure when Mr. Bittner was a young manager, he actually had employees that had the spikes on the boots and they climbed the poles. Remember those days, Mr. Bittner? Apparently he doesn't, he just, you know, anyway. But look at the piece of equipment, that's our equipment. That's your employee digging with the excavator, and we do an awful lot of digging up to a point. And we usually don't like to go more than eight feet deep because we don't have the shore. But if you look at all the work that we do, on the far right, you have one of the parks people who's working to clean up a median. Here again, these are dirty jobs. These are not white-collar jobs like I'm fortunate to have. These are people who are out there every day, it doesn't matter whether it's 20 degrees or whether it's 100 degrees, and amazingly enough, we're not that far away from having some of those days. But these are people who do the work that makes your city the city that it is. Sanitation. Remember, 1.7 million sanitation collections a year. That's hard to believe, but if you take 52 weeks a year, multiply that times garbage collection 52 times a year, recycling 52 times a year, and horticultural 48 times a year, you get to almost 1.7 million customer service calls. These are people who depend on the taxpayer for their income, but these are people who return to the taxpayer, I believe, a tremendous benefit. And when you talk about benefit, look at safety. This is the safest community. Now, I'm gonna knock on wood, I guess I'll do it this way, since that's the only wood I have around. You very seldom hear the city of Jacksonville on the news. Unfortunately, some of our neighboring cities, you hear that almost every night. The fact that, you know, you look at all of the, the numbers, it really comes down to one thing, the word safety. We are a safe community. Why? Because of the people in blue. Now, it's not a perfect department, it's a department that has challenges just like every other department in the city, including my own department at the manager's office, but it is a department committed to what? Keeping people safe. I can ask you, do you know of another town from a safety standpoint you'd prefer to live in? Now, those of you running for your election, please don't answer that, unless you're saying, no, I don't know of another city. But the point being, you know, behind all the numbers are real people. What about the fire department? Do you know where T. Tallman was last night from 7:00 till 10:00? He was in a training exercise where he, as the chief, was inside of an 18-inch wide pipe. And I have to admit, as skinny as I am, I'm not so sure. In my life, I've been in '24, '26, '48, a lot of big pipes inspecting them, never been in an 18-inch pipe. T. was leading a training exercise last night so that he could show his staff that he's committed as their leader. This is what you get. Now, the fire department fortunately isn't called out that often, except for one thing, EMS calls. Remember, over 50% of all fire calls today are not about a fire. They're about health, and we are fortunate. The police department is there in 3 minutes and 32 seconds, the fire department's there a little bit longer because obviously they're fixed base dispatched. These are the people who make up your city operation. How many? Well, with the addition of the transit, we now have 604 budgeted positions in your FY23 budget. We also have 168 part-time people. Remember all of the schoolchildren that we take care of before and after? Remember all of the schoolchildren that we take care of before and after? Remember the crossing guards? Remember all of the summer people? Now, I'll have to tell you, of the 168, we don't have many of those fulfilled. And of the 604, we have an awful lot of vacancies. And that's gonna be what we're gonna be talking about. If you look at it from a profile by fund, funding mechanism, you can see the breakout. Total 604. What about by race and by male and female? I was surprised to learn that we actually have four people on staff that qualify, according to the census, as Native American or Alaska. To be quite frank with you, I know who one of them is. I don't know who the other three are. The other point is this. If you look at the 635 number, look over to the far left bottom. This is the total of full-time and part-time. Let me go back a slide. You have 604 full-time people. You have 772 full people as far as part-time and full-time. But look at this number. On the day that this count was taken, and it varies every day, out of those over 700 positions, we only had 635 filled. From a race standpoint, you can see the demographics based upon the census. Native Hawaiian, Pacific Isle, two or more races, Hispanic, Latino, Black or African-American, Asian, again, Native American and Alaskan. We are a very diverse organization. Now, again, there are improvements we can be making. But don't kid yourself, we are very diverse. When it comes to males and females, it's not surprising we're predominantly male organization. But I don't know, how many of you get your, let's see, if you're in Ward 3, obviously that means the two of us. Do you realize that one of our large garbage truck drivers today is a young 28-year-old female? Started off riding the tailboard, picking up garbage cans, worked her way up as a crew leader, is now the crew leader driving one of our residential garbage trucks. What about veterans? We believe very strongly in hiring veterans. We also believe very strongly in hiring their spouses. We actually have 21% of our employees who are veterans. But if you add the spouses, like the two young ladies that are in the manager's and clerk's office, we go up to almost 30%. We're very proud of the fact that we are the home of the Marines and sailors. And guess what? We owe it back to them to hire them. Kimberly Williams has done a fantastic job with this state statewide, leading over a 10-year program, the NC for Me. And as you know, recently she won a national award and accepted it on behalf of the city for the work that she's doing to help employ the veterans as they come out of service in this state. What about the manager's office, male and female, or the management of the city? Well, you can see, we're heavily male, 72%, 28% female. From a race standpoint, 12 of us are white, 2 are African-Americans. Again, if you look at the FTEs, full-time employees, they're spread out throughout the departments. From a compensation standpoint, your 604 employees fall really into two plans. The general plan and the fire department's, I'm sorry, the police department's step plan. Now, remember, a police department's step plan is two groups. It's your telecommunications. It's also your police officer 1-2s and 3s. I think it's important to look at pay. I can tell you, I look back on my life, and I can remember when my first job was a busboy at the Beach Club Hotel. I made $2 a meal. Not $2 an hour, but from the time breakfast started till the time breakfast was over, I got $2. And that lasted about three hours. Some of you can remember back to the point where your first job, and you can remember what you got paid. I can remember I was in the, probably 8th grade, when my father made $10,000 for the first time. You remember your parents' wages. When people my age think of someone making $37,000 to $47,000, your mind automatically seems to think, wow, that's great salary. Well, it's a great salary when the cocoa was a nickel. The realities of life are upon us, folks. These are actual numbers. I asked the finance department through the payroll to tell us how many of our employees fall in each of these 10 categories. Now, actually, I asked them to tell me 20 to 30, 30 to 40. They never pay attention to me. They pick their own numbers. But for whatever reason, here are the categories. You have 148 employees. Now, these are full-time employees. These are not part-time. 32% of our workforce makes between $27,000 and $37,000. Another 126 or 27% make between $37,000 and $47,000. So if you combine the two, 59% of our employees make less than $47,000. Now, I'm gonna tell you, that sounds like a lot of money. It's not a lot of money anymore. And you can see, there are people such as myself who is in the top category. I'm very blessed. We have been very blessed. But if you look, the vast majority of your employees, take the top three tiers, 30 and 27, or 32 and 27 and 20, comes up to what? Almost 80%. Let me do that again. 30, that's 50, that's 70, 70, yeah, almost 80%. And I did that without Mr. Thomas's assistance. That was good. The city is a good employer. You know, we are facing a challenge regarding compensation. But never forget, this is a great place to work. It really is a great place to work. We provide insurance. We have holidays. We have functions. We provide uniforms. We have education assistance. You can read those things, sick leave, vacation. There are so many people in this country who don't have anything you see on that screen. But our city employees have it. Why? Because you, as the elected officials, have agreed to provide it. There are other, Mr. Bittner asked not too long ago about longevity pay. And we provided you all with some information. That's almost like a Christmas present at the end of the year. Performance awards, sick leave, and certification pay. But there are challenges with that. You know, in your own life, what's happened with the cost of insurance. These are the premium increases that we have passed on in the past. They have devastated the number of people who participate. Again, we're educating. An employee, if you are just an employee, you're not covering anybody in your family. You may not realize that the city doesn't pay the full premium. The city pays most of the premium. In FY '19, if you were just a city employee with a $2,750 deductible, you paid $23 a paycheck. Today, because of all those premium increases, it's now up to $34. That doesn't sound like much, but remember, it's 26 paychecks. So if you're a single or whatever, let's just say you're an employee, and the only person who's covered is you, $884 comes out of your paycheck at the end of the year. Now, it comes out a little bit at a time, kind of like the Easy Must payment plan, but it comes out. Here's the staggering number. If you're trying to cover your family over $7,000 a year, and if you're in that 27 to 37 category, or the $37,000 to $47,000 category, and guess what? We're having more and more and more people drop insurance. Not because they don't need it, they simply can't afford it. One of the challenges that we have is holidays. Now, I will tell you, coming out of the private sector, I didn't have 10 holidays. And many of you don't have 10 holidays. But I will remind you, we're losing people every day to the county. And one of the reasons why is right here on the screen. What the advantage that the county has is they can close. We never close. The city government is never closed. The water plant is always open. People always think police and fire are open, and that's true. But the water plant never closes. Most of the time, the land app is open at least one of the two days on the weekend. The other part, though, comes down to this. Every holiday that you can let everybody off is great. But every holiday that you provide for your employees costs us what, Mr. Mayor?
A lot of money.
A lot of money in the form of overtime.
Overtime pay.
It's not that, well, you know, when somebody works a holiday, you know, it results in overtime. The retirement plan, we are, we require, let me say it differently. The state law requires, through the North Carolina retirement system, contributions. This year is the fourth year in a row that we've had to raise our contributions because of the solvency of the state plan. Do you know, in this year's budget, we've had to raise over $400,000? When you look, just to pay the next installment on our employees' retirement. Now, I'm gonna tell you, at my age, hey, I've been blessed and I am fortunate. Unfortunately, too many people who are in their early 20s or even early 30s, or regardless whether even in their 60s, when they're in certain categories, taking 6% out of their salary hurts. Look at the numbers. If you're making $47,000, the mandatory 6% is $28,200. And I want to remind you of the health insurance number. If you're in this $47,000 category, and you're also trying to provide health insurance for your family, between these two numbers, $10,000 of your $47,000 went to those two things. I mean, inflation is eating this country. And medical costs are eating this country. The problem is, none of us have a choice. I guess you do. You could say, I'm not gonna cover my family. You can see, the city, though, while the employee is mandated to put in 6%, the city this year will put in 12.4% and had to add to your budget over $400,000 more to pay our portion of the mandatory increase.
Is this the last year of the increase?
We hope so. The problem, Mayor, is when you look at inflation, who knows? But the answer to your question is, from what we have been told, this is the last of the four years. But don't look in your mail tomorrow. Let's talk about inflation. And this is about all of us. This isn't about just your employees. The southeast region ended 2021 at 5.1%. You know that the first three months of this year, it is 8.4, and it is rising. As you know, Lowe's is my favorite store. But there's also another store my wife visits, and that's the grocery store. So the other day, I happened to go along with her, and I took these pictures. Sweet peas and green beans are actually on sale now for $1.39 a can. I'm talking about on sale, folks. Now, I can remember back when, you know, the green peas actually came in the shell. You had to shell them yourselves. They didn't come in a can. That was before electricity, as my boys will always tell us. But guess what? There's nothing special about this. Now, I have to tell you, I love Duke. Do you remember who Duke is? He's the dog. That's right, not the dog. He's the dog. He's the dog on the baked bean. This is commercial. I love the fact he can talk. I've tried to teach my dog years ago how to talk, and I found that putting peanut butter up there, he could talk. Just couldn't understand it very well. But look at this. This isn't the giant can of baked beans. Two cans of baked beans on sale for $5. They're only beans, folks. And I don't know, the pork that's in them has never been more than like a quarter of an inch in size.
Bush's beans.
You know? Turkey. For heaven's sake, paying $3.29 and think you're getting a deal? Beef. You can't read that very well. That package is $8.51, but if you actually look at the weight, it's $5.80 a pound. Now, I remember the old days when they had the Quarter Pounder at one of the restaurants, which I won't mention the name of. And you paid whatever. Well, guess what? You're not paying whatever anymore at $5.80 a pound for beef. Here's the one that staggered me. Now, I have to admit, Nature's Owl White Pork is not the cheapest bread. It's not what we grew up calling fish bread. You know what fish bread is? That's the cheapest bread. You buy it, you make little dough balls, you put it on a little hook, and it gets brimmed. That's fish bread. This is people bread. I'm talking, two loaves of bread on sale. But look above it. $3.79 for a loaf of bread? You know, and that's not even specialty bread. And of course, milk. $4.39 a gallon. Here's one you're really gonna love. Forget the note on the left a second, look at the right. Last week, across the street from City Hall, $3.88 for a gallon of gas. On May the 9th, oh, you hadn't heard the story yet. Hang with me now. On May the 9th, which was yesterday, at 11:00 a.m., it had gone up to $4.05. Guess what? The same day, at 5:00 p.m., it was $4.19. And just to show you how wonderful life is, if you buy 20 gallons of gas a week, which some people do, some people don't, depends on where you live and how far you have to go, in the last year, gas has gone up $2 a gallon. And that has taken out of your pocket and every citizen's pocket and every city employee's pocket $2,000. And of course, that's assuming that you buy 20 gallons of gas. Some of us drive less than that. I can imagine, in your business, you know, your trucks probably run, who knows, 50 gallons a week? Maybe even more. A lot. This is what the inflation rate says. This is what real life says. The other thing I want us to remember is, employment is now a competition. A competition. Who is it? Meaning, who is our competition? Read the answer with me. It's every government and every business within driving distance of where you currently live. I mean, I can remember, and you can too, when a person came to work and they stayed with that company their entire life. Today, literally today, Tuesday, May the 10th, I signed three papers where employees had resigned. Two of them were 15-year employees. 15-year employees. One of them- One of them was an eight-year employee. And do you know where they're moving their family? One of them is going to work out at one of the beach cities. One of them is going to work for another government. And one of them did not say where he's going to work, but it's where he does not have to move his family. Why? Money. And why the money? It isn't about loyalty anymore, it's about surviving. You've seen all of the inflation information. I had an employee come to me the other day and say, look, I love this city, but I hate, I have to tell you, I am taking a job I do not want to take. But I am taking that job because that job pays me $4 an hour more than what the city can pay me. Now do the simple math, 2,080 hours times $4 an hour, that's real money. You know? We're in a competition. The last cou- couple of years, in 2020, we had 134 vacancies. That's 21% turnover. And 21 is 180 vacancies, and so far, the last 12 months, 198 vacancies. But here's the other part. Remember, in 19, we had 134 vacancies? We had 6,997 applicants. Look at how many applicants we have today. Less than 50%. And why? Because it's a competition, and to be quite honest with you, our pay structure and our benefits are not keeping up the race. It's, it's not a pretty picture. Look at this picture. We have 116 employees, as of this morning. Kimberly was kind to run the records for me this morning. 116 employees have been with us 15 or more years. Uh, 215 have been with us less than three years. Spell it any way you want to. We are bleeding employees. It, it is just that simple. Employment is a competition. Well, you've seen this before. Here's some things that are real. Our labor force, we pay $12 to $17, our competition's paying $15 to $19. We lost almost half of our parks crews, our permanent employed parks crews, to the county. We can't even fill the 19 positions we have for our summer weed eaters, we have five. The police department, a PO1, $38,000. We have sister cities right up and down the coast who are paying anywhere from $4,000 to $8,000 more. And they don't have to move. Firefighters, we start a firefighter one at 33.5. Everybody, we are the lowest paid of the fire departments, other than the volunteer fire departments. And do you know why the volunteer fire departments are paid less than we are? Because they don't get paid, they're volunteers. Skilled positions. We can't find an engineer, and you're not gonna find an engineer. I'm gonna be just straight up with you. You could raise the salary of an engineer to $150,000, you will not find one. Why? Because the industry right now is so busy that private engineering companies are hiring anybody with a seal. So you're not gonna have an engineer, Wally's talked to you about that before. We have been now, what, a year without a city engineer, and we've advertised, and we no longer even advertise. There's no need to waste the money and the time. And?
Traffic engineers, well.
Yeah, traffic engineers, well. Employment is a competition. These are real numbers. New Hanover County has announced that this year, an 8.6% COLA, that's staggering. And a pay plan increase of eight, of 6.86%. The city of Wilmington, look what they're doing. New Bern is pending. Onslow County, their COLA is pending. Kinston, they just moved their entire pay scale 22%. That's unreal. A lot of these cities you're not gonna compete with. You might compete with Morehead City. Again, turnover and applications. It is not a pretty picture. It comes down to money. Even to give a 5% increase is gonna cost you a million dollars. When you include the police who are in this step plan and the telecommunications, it's gonna cost you $500,000. Together, $1.8 million, might as well say $2 million. My job as a manager is to bring you next week ways of funding this. And I'm gonna be quite honest with you. You're gonna have to do something relative to looking at your tax rate versus your tax neutral. I'm gonna spend a minute talking to you about that, why? Remember the formula for dis- for distributing, that's terrible, or distributing the sales tax. Gail, what's the formula?
It's based on everybody's property tax levy.
That's right. Do you know that North Toppsel has announced that even after revow, they're not changing their tax rate?
And that have, in which most of their property values have doubled?
That's right. Uh, they're not going to tax neutral, they're staying where it is. You know what that means to you? It means that if you go to tax neutral, you just lost sales tax of probably $100,000. The county has already told us that they are going to, at least theoretically, six cents above tax neutral. You know what that will do to you? A couple of hundred thousand dollars off of your sales tax. You're, you're in a dilemma, we are in a dilemma. My job is to bring back to you options, and I will do that on, I started to say Tuesday night, on Wednesday night of next week. What I'm saying to you, you're not gonna like any of the options. But your choices are very difficult choices. Do you wanna become and stay the training ground where you train the best policemen, the best firemen, the best workers, only to lose them a year or two down the road after they get all the certifications? You ask us, actually, Dr. Washington was the one who, who made the initial request, and y'all all agreed, for us to do a survey to find out why people are leaving. And we did, we did three surveys. The first survey was for the police department, five simple questions. Second survey was for fire emergency services, five simple questions. The third survey was for everybody else in the organization, five simple questions. The reason why there were two different surveys for police and fire versus the general employee is that Mike, as the Director of Public Safety and Police Chief, wanted to ask some different questions than the general employee. Same thing to T, he wanted to ask some different questions, so those were prepared. The general employees, we had 52% return, which I was a little disappointed in, but on the other hand, we only gave them about a week. Here's what they said they like. They like their coworkers, they like the teamwork, they like the atmosphere, it is friendly. Bottom line is, they feel like Jacksonville is a good place to work. They enjoy being here. Over 70% satisfaction. That's awfully good. The hard question, what's the number one issue? The number one issue was pay, followed closely by health insurance, lack of advancement, and holidays. The next question was, if you could improve anything other than pay, what would you improve? In order, they said, improve benefits. Then they said, health insurance. Well, remember, health insurance and holidays and retirement are all benefits. And then, if they said, what is the number one challenge that you're really facing other than pay? That they want city council to try to address? Health insurance, retirement, and holidays. The police department had an outstanding response, 57%. The number one thing that they are concerned about in question number one, other than pay, is what? They're understaffed and they turn, and too much turnover. Mike has talked to you before, you've heard it from others too, about how many police officers we lose as soon as they get to be P2s or P3s. We're always gonna lose some for retirement. We're always gonna lose some because they decided, well, the job's for them. I will also tell you, we're still seeing nationwide a tremendous number of people leaving the police department because of the social climate that is negative to police departments. In this city, we're fortunate. We have a city that appreciates its police department. And I know each of you is the council members and the mayor, y'all appreciate the police department. But guess what? This is what they say, this isn't what I say, this isn't what the chief says, this is what your employees are saying. They're understaffed, and turnover is just absolutely, just killing the department. What is the number one issue? Pay. And pay is tied right back to number one as far as turnover. The other comments were, the insurance is poor and unaffordable. I would disagree with the fact that it's poor. I think you have a good insurance plan. The fact is, as you've seen, it's unaffordable to too many people. One of the main concerns that the police department expressed was they're losing experienced officers. Mike has told you before, it isn't about how many bodies you have on the street. Let me say it that differently. It's not about how many officers you have on the street. It's about how qualified those officers are to be on the street. I have said to you before, the ideal police department is one that's made up almost completely of PO3s, your corporals. Why? Because they've got eight or 10 or 15 years of experience, they know the community, the community knows them. That's not what you have. They also said that they felt the city should reevaluate its priorities. Now, I'm responsible for that, and let me explain to you what the comments really say. They don't understand how the city and how I, as the manager, can talk to you about expanding water and sewer pipes and paving roads, but not talk to you about paying their salaries. Unfortunately, I haven't done the job that I should have done on helping them understand the different funding sources and the fact that money received for water and sewer and for putting in pipes can only be spent certain ways. I will also tell you, they are, and, and I'm gonna be just quite upfront, many of them roasted me in their survey for the fact that I did not approve the $1,000 bonus pay that was coming out of the CARES Act. I will tell you why. They feel like everybody else got it, and I did not give it to them. My thinking, right or wrong, was this. According to the regulations, they would have qualified. But according to the regulations, there were about 200 other city employees who worked every day, who wouldn't have qualified even though they were out there in the same general conditions. For example, your sanitation workers. Did they miss a pickup? No. But it doesn't change the fact that in this, a lot of city employees blame me, and I'll accept that blame, for the fact that they didn't get that $1,000 that the county gave to every one of their employees, even the desk jockeys. I shouldn't have used that term, but anyway. The last thing in their survey was this. Many would not recommend a friend to join JPD or the city. Folks, I'm gonna tell you, that's stabbing in the heart. I mean, seriously. We pride ourselves on being a good place to work. Let's look at fire and emergency services. Now, he told those people that if they would fill out the survey, that he would go through an 18-inch diameter 20-foot. So they almost all filled out that survey. The number one issue, and remember, their survey is different than the others. The number one issue is competitive pay and benefits. The number two, additional personnel. Number three is the turnover. And I will tell you, over the last three months, how many people have you lost to the base?
Uh, five or six, yes, sir.
And how many fire, how many firemen have you lost in the last three months overall?
Seven or eight, yes, sir.
What is it that the, they'd like to see the city work on? Better pay, better insurance, and better staffing. On the other hand, look at number five, great pride in their work. And number six, one of the things they want T to be working on is improving communications. Now. You can summarize all three of these surveys, I think, into one word. Mr. Bittner, what's the word?
Maybe pay.
We have to address it, and it's not gonna be pretty. It's absolutely not gonna be pretty. Next week, I'm gonna talk to you about compensation. And the challenge that you're gonna have to face is, which of three or four bad options, because there are no good options, which of three or four bad options are you gonna have to select? At the end of the day, we all know this. Taxpayers pay taxes. And not every taxpayer is getting a pay increase. Many of our taxpayers are on fixed incomes. Tough choices, by a head. I appreciate the fact you've let me, I don't like to use the word preach, but I feel like that's what I did tonight. I apologize if I was too blunt or too strong. But I think you need to see what your employees are facing and what we, as an organization, are facing. Any questions about what I presented? I'll have Rose upload all of these for you tomorrow so that if you wanna have nightmares tomorrow night, as well as tonight, you can review this a second time.
And you'll be coming back to us next week.
Next Wednesday night.
Some ways of maybe possibly funding this, uh, this problem.
Thank you very much for your courtesy tonight.
Any, uh, anybody got anything?
We do have, uh, we do have a one-city moment we'd like to give. We could do that, so would y'all pull up a one-city moment?
Tambourine.
Anybody know what this is?
Mr. Bittner, was that Mr. Bittner, hold that.
He told you not to say that.
We estimate the crowd at over 4,000 people. Great event, uh, the public really enjoyed. This is the Marine Band out of Cherry Point, not the one out of Camp Lejeune. Uh, they really played some great music and were, were really entertaining. Everything went well until 3:30. Does anybody remember what happened at 3:30 on Saturday? Yeah, the bottom fell out.
Much-needed rain.
Much-needed rain. But Susan and her staff, and Michael and his staff, and just so many other people would be commended. Great, great, great event, and we thank you. You know, it's once again one of those where, when people walk up and say, how much? And we say, it's free. They say, really? It's because you, as the elected officials, want to provide events that are in this community that are free, and y'all would be commended for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your evening.
Anybody else? Question to adjourn?
Salute.
Second? Second, on favor?